That takes average daily rate and it multiplies it by the occupancy rate. We, in 2021, our rev par, if you will, was $68. Well, it was $94 in Colorado Springs compared to even 2019. As you all know, it's better to compare to 19 than it is to 20. But we actually did very well compared to the other hotels and the destinations across the Front Range. So it was a very, very good performance by the hotels. As I go into group sales, I want to just let you know that we think 2022 is going to be different than 2021 in this regard. The Hotel Elegante is no longer a group hotel. And at 500 rooms and almost 25,000 square feet of meeting space, it actually was our second-largest hotel. And we would say there were a lot of groups that would want to take a good look at the Hotel Elegante. And for everyone here who has been, you know that it, there was a certain niche that it served. There was a certain rate category and the Labor Day liftoff. And all those groups really enjoyed. And there's, there's just no question that, you know, it kind of changed on us at the end of the year, but we are already seeing in 2022 the void and the cancellations that we were not able to rebook here in Colorado Springs. We just, there was so much compression and so much demand on group business, the groups that were already committed to the Elegante, we, many of which ended up going to Pueblo, they ended up going up to Denver and even going north up the Front Range when we could not accommodate them here in Colorado Springs. So group sales is going to be a challenge. Yes, Dave?
Um, Doug, do you have a ballpark figure how much LART revenue came, say, just in one year from Hotel Elegante with 500 rooms?
Roughly, and I know Sheree is not here, but we've calculated it and said probably $200,000 roughly.
Okay.
But clearly, we have new hotel rooms coming on. So, yeah, we don't think that we're going to see, and we're out of the gates really, really strong. So we don't think it's going to have that, a big impact on LART collections in 2022.
How about this question, Doug? Who's going to replace Elegante, do you think, within our city in terms of the rates and offering what they did historically? Anybody? Is it just going to be a whole?
No, sir. I don't think anybody's going to replace the Elegante.
That niche?
Yes. That's, that's one that we're, we're missing and we're gonna, we're gonna feel it. You know, we're, we're looking forward to the day that the new hotel up at the Air Force Academy opens. At 375 rooms and nearly 25,000 square feet of space at that hotel. We've certainly heard talk about another downtown hotel that could, that could be in the works. But just as an example, the, the new Weston Element and Marriott Spring Hill Suites that's going to be opening here this spring. It's about 260 sleeping rooms, so it's about half of what the Elegante had. But their meeting space, they, they have a nice rooftop ballroom that's about 1,500 square feet, but it just doesn't have the meeting space.
Okay.
That Elegante.
Thank you. Ms. Henjim's got a question.
Well, just can you remind us how those rooms will be used, however?
How?
At Hotel Elegante, how those rooms will be serving our city?
Yes, they have been, they are being converted. It's still open as a hotel right now, pretty much rooms only, but it will be converted to affordable housing.
So that's a good thing. Thanks.
Stephanie?
Go ahead.
Should we be?
We got, we got Bill Murray and then Stephanie, okay? Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thank you, sir. Should we be recruiting, encouraging another hotel like Hotel Elegante? And may I add that the University of Texas has a wonderful hotel conference area on campus and maybe perhaps that's something we could do here.
You know, Stephanie, it's, it's a really good point. And I don't know that we could really recruit a hotel to go into that niche, that space in, from this regard. Chances are, somebody's going to have to build it. And that hotel was already amateurized, paid for. And so anybody who's building costs today, you would not be able to open a 500-room hotel at that level of, of rate. So it, it would have to be something that converted and wanted to become a hotel. And that would be, that would be an interesting project if, if, if somebody wanted to do that. It'd be like taking space somewhere and building a hotel next to it.
Mr. Murray?
Well, disappointing answer, but that was the exact question I was going to, that reminds, I think first order priority is that we have a restriction right now. And I think it might be advantageous to us to take that restriction off because it has to be a ballot issue. So just a thought.
You're talking about for a convention center?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay.
But we could just take it off and then leave that option open for future councils or other issues, but you have to take it off first.
Mm-hmm. Yes. For anyone who is not aware of that, in the, in the city charter, there was, in 2005, there was a amendment, Jeff, I'm not sure what it would be called, that says that the city of Colorado Springs is not able to plan for a convention center unless there was a vote of the citizens that would allow them to, to do that. And that's just for planning purposes.
That, that is correct. There was a charter amendment and it was initiated primarily by former Mayor Lionel Rivera that would prohibit the city of Colorado Springs from initiating any discussions or planning for a convention center. By all means, the city does encourage hotels to expand their footprint, to encourage conference space facilities. I know some for new hotels that's, that's in planning or hotels that are in development are expanding their conference facilities so they can provide some on-site support, especially for business travelers coming to the region.
Mr. Green, let me ask, as I look over to our left, I see Mayor Rivera looking down on us here. Why did they do that? What, what was the thought process behind that, that amendment?
You know, I, I think I would have to defer to former Mayor Rivera for his reasoning behind that. But, and you got to realize, at that point in time, it was very contentious here in the city. There was a lot of different types of activities that was occurring. And so I want to be respectful of the history and, but it is what it is. And so if the city wants to initiate that type of activity, we'd have to place a ballot item to basically repeal that charter amendment. And that would be a different process. But I do believe with the Broadmoors expansion and the Broadmoor has built a convention center, I think they're very equivalent to the new Gaylord facilities that's near the Denver International Airport. And I think as future hotels are being planned in the downtown area, it's been strongly encouraged for the expansion of conference space.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Murray, maybe that's something we can circle back and have a discussion?
Well, not just circle back. I mean, I'm just, again, slightly confused, like I normally am, about where we really want to go. Now, would this council really want to go into putting a ballot issue, okay, allowing us to plan, discuss, propose, you know, a conference center that we believe, and I, that's how I'm taking it from, from Doug here, that we believe would be in the future best interest of this community? We did it for fiber. I mean, the state said, hey, unless you opt out, you can't do it. We opted out, we did it.
Yeah.
And, and it's, that, that's going to really be helpful for the city. But can we, like, put a benchmark, say, let's, let's sit down and, and put something on the ballot in November? I believe the public would, would be appreciative of, of us asking and thinking forward and the next councils could sit there and build whatever they wanted to. But again, you can't go anywhere or do anything until it's on the ballot. And so that's what matters.
You know, Councilman Murray, the one thing I would, the only thing I would change in what you just said is that, that it's about planning, not building.
Exactly.
Right. It, it doesn't mean at this stage that anybody has land that would said that they would go do that.
It's in wording.
But the city right now can't even talk about it.
Right. It's in the narrative and that's what I'm asking, asking the council to specifically consider a narrative for November that says, hey, let's, let's review the situation, let's review the opportunities, let's allow us to look in a bigger, greater scale of things and for, for this particular thing instead of being caught every year into a, let's wait to a, an election or a vote before we can even discuss it. That was my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. And we got other folks that want to talk to this. You've got a lot of interest already, Doug. Emily, can we, at the next agenda planning session, maybe have this as a topic we can talk about? Okay. Ms. Fortune, then we'll go to Ms. Henjim, then the Chief of Staff.
I've heard some thought that City Odd could also play a role in providing space for the hotel that's right, that's close to it. Is that true, that that's possible?
It, it is. It is. And I think that in the, in the plans that I've seen for City Auditorium, it appears that if you think of that gym floor, about half of that gym floor is going to be available where seats can roll out and roll back and, and be used. So I don't know the, the square footage of what that is, but, but you're right. At least the front half of that existing auditorium could be used for groups, whether they stayed at the Hyatt Place or, or wherever they stayed. There's, there's no question that that will be, that'll open us up to some groups that we've never been able to really solicit for. So you're right.
Okay. Ms. Henjim?
Well, I guess this is a question for you, Doug, and maybe for the Chief of Staff as well. I, I'm rather agnostic about a convention center, but if you could just tell me your, you know, your position as somebody who's been in the position you've been in for so long, what are the pros and cons? Why, why would we want to consider discussing this as a city council?
Great question.
You were prepared for that, weren't you?
Right. Great, great question. I don't want to talk out of both sides of my mouth, so I want to be really clear about this. One of the reasons that we had, we fared so well during the pandemic was that we were not as reliant on citywide conventions as they are in Denver. Citywide conventions are still not back at full strength. There, there are lots of hybrid meetings going on as, as part of that. Even Space Symposium, the numbers look great for Space Symposium in a couple of weeks. But there's also a hybrid component to that. Had we depended on having to fill a convention center the last two years, it, it would have been a different, a different story. That said, Chief of Staff Green mentioned Bartlett Hall over at the Broadmore, which, when it opened, it, it has about 130,000 square feet. And when you do add the other components of the meeting space there at, at the Broadmore, you're right, it, it gets it much closer to the Gaylord Hotel. But one of the key differences is that the Gaylord Hotel is a 1,500-room hotel and they're adding an additional 300 rooms to take it up to 1,800, potentially even taking it up to 2,000 rooms. So that has an impact on downtown Denver. And for us here, we would never build a building that would be that large. I mean, that is something that, to, Bill, to your point that you made earlier, it would be about planning as opposed to building. Because I do get asked this question is, what's the magic number? And I truly do not know what the magic number is because we, we just have to, hotel inventory is a big part of what you have congruent or within walking distance, if you will, easy shuttle of a convention center. So I do know this, I, I do know that the Broadmore is now, is working hard to utilize Bartlett Hall in the off-season for October through, you know, March, April. They are absolutely going after groups that not only could stay at the Broadmore, but could also stay downtown, they could stay at Cheyenne Mountain Resort, Doubletree in, in that whole, that whole area. So there'd be overflow. So Nancy, it's, it's a great question that we really have to study. And at this point, it would have to be done privately if that was going to be pursued.
Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to elaborate a little bit further in what Mr. Price was stating is that when you look at similar-sized cities or larger cities than the city of Colorado Springs, they do have convention centers. But it requires a lot of funding from the municipality to support those convention centers. As long as you have business conferences, you have conventions that can support and bring the revenue to finance those types of facilities, to operate those types of facilities, then you're good. When you have downtimes, like especially during the pandemic, those municipalities are really required to step up to continue to fund those operations. Oklahoma City, they built their convention centers through a tax initiative, their program called MAPS. Other cities have like a specific tax that is imposed onto the public for those coming to the community to help fund those types of facilities. The city of Colorado Springs' position has always been, let's promote, encourage the private sector to evaluate what the market needs are and then build those facilities with or with little financial assistance from the city itself. That's why we encourage, when you look at planning, you know, to evaluate what are the needs, expand your conference facilities and, and so forth. I, I believe the administration would have serious concerns about the city initiating that type of activity, especially with all the other needs the city has before it going down the convention center route.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Now that we've taken you totally off your schedule, you want to go to trade shows?
Yeah, thanks. I'll go through these quickly. This is per our KPIs and contract with the city. This just shows.
And let everybody know your KPIs?
Are key performance indicators?
Yep.
And those are, you know, we measure what we do and we report on these. So as you can imagine, in 20 and 21, there were less trade shows that even took place. So we're just getting back into the, the market. I'm happy to say that we've got group salespeople that are now out traveling. Here's an example from the fourth quarter of 2021 of some of the shows that we did attend. Fam trips, where meeting planners come in and take a look at our destination. We were still a little bit below 2020 and still well behind 2019. There are some examples of some site visits that we took in, in 2020, in fourth quarter. Leads, the demand is there. The demand is there. You can see how many leads, both direct and indirect leads are coming in. People do want to meet again. So, and here, here it is from a visual standpoint of what the, the group leads, from both the new leads and existing accounts that want to come back to Colorado Springs. Cost per lead is another measurement that we do. As the number of leads go up, the cost comes down. And as, these are just the definitions before I show you the bookings of a, of a definite booking versus an assist. This is in your packet. And the estimated room nights for 2021 was still, you know, down. It would, the, the definites were up over 20, but as you can see, we're still behind the pace of 2019, which was a record year. Group servicing, where we work with the groups, the number of delegates that they come in with everything from your visitor guides to the lip balm and the, the welcome letters and things like that, that was what we did in 2021, that many delegates. And any questions, any further questions on the group side of it?
Yeah, we got a couple of questions. We'll go with Ms. Fortune and then Mr. Williams.
Is it, do you know, is it business travel that's coming back or is that other travel?
Business travel is still lacking. It's, it's more leisure travel that's, that's, and sports, youth sports in particular is, is still almost recession-proof. If your kids are competing somewhere, there's going to be a parent and siblings that generally accompany them. So Olympic City USA and all the sports that we have here, that's been the market that's, that in the leisure market.
Glad we have a replacement.
Yes.
That's great.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Williams and then Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, so go back two slides if you would. So when we talk about hotel revenue from LART, we see that our occupancy was fairly close to a couple of years ago, close.
It was 64 to 70, yes.
Right. But then we see this, which is dramatically different. And this would back up what you just said, that this business group travel is still down. And so here's my bigger question, right? I knew that because, because at LART, we talk about that and other things. Do the projections in the industry believe that it will someday get back to where it was? Or has there been a permanent reset where people say, we don't all need to get together as much as we did in this industry, in this group? So that's, that's looking long-term. And I'm not asking you to be the single prognosticator, but what's the belief in the industry here?
The power of face-to-face meetings will come back. I don't know that hybrids will ever go away. I mean, I think probably could speak for all of us in saying that, you know, if it saves us a few trips up and down I-25 to, for, for meetings in Denver, they can be a time savings. But we really do believe there's, there's a couple of pieces to that. And number one is the international traveler is still not back. And the international traveler will probably not be back much before 2024, 2025. The second piece is, is that I have been really concerned about has been the increase in gas prices and wondering what that's going to do to planning for the summer of 2022. And the research that I'm reading is that people haven't, a lot of people haven't vacationed in two summers. They are so ready to hit the road. There is a lot of pent-up demand. But what we're, what we're seeing, at least across the country, is that people are saying, we're still going to come. We may fly, we might drive, but they're still going to come, they're going to stay in hotels, they're going to stay in campsites. But instead of perhaps spending X amount for a hotel room, they might spend a little bit less and they're going to watch their budget. They're going to watch how many, where they eat out and how much their, their spend is. But they, there's so many people that are waiting to go on vacation this summer. Advanced booking for flights is very strong. Hotels forecast is very, very strong. And, you know, to go back to something I said earlier, when you take the Hotel Elegante's rooms out of the mix, you know, the next hotel that's going to open will be the, the Spring Hill Suites and the Element, and they're going to only be half the size of what the Elegante is on the south side of town. So there's compression happening. I think people will travel this summer and, but it's, it's something that we're, we're watching closely.
Okay, Mr. Williams? Something else?
Yeah, the other question I've got is, from a governmental standpoint, one of the largest annual events from a governmental standpoint here was the Winter Conference for Colorado Counties that was at the Hotel Elegante. Do we know where they've gone?
I do not. It was like December, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's the weekend after Thanksgiving.
Yes, yeah. I, I will find that out. I, I don't know where that's, where that meeting has gone, but that's a good question.
Okay, thanks.
You have got a lot of interest from this council, Mr. Price. We got Mr. Donaldson, then Mr. Helms, then Ms. Henjim again. So, Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, Doug, do you know in 2021, Colorado Springs, we had kind of a less severe COVID restrictions here as far as masking and things like that? Did you hear from groups that were coming here that, hey, we like that? Or were they concerned about that or did it play no, no role at all? Denver, for example, was still like, you know, mandatory mask mandates to go lots of places.
A little bit, a little bit, Dave, we heard some of that. But, you know, El Paso County Health was, was really, really good to work with. And what in essence happened was they left it up to the individual hotels and restaurants and attractions to be able to have your own mask mandate or order. And we certainly know that groups could also have done the same thing, just because you were okay to come to El Paso County and not necessarily wear a mask. We certainly saw servers wearing masks for their own protection and dealing with the public. So I, I don't know that anybody booked here because of our position on, on mask mandates, but I think it, it helped us. And, and the number of outbreaks was, was minimal. And so there were really good procedures in place to try and minimize outbreaks at, at hotels, restaurants or attractions.
Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Helms and then Ms. Henjim.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Can you address the LART tax itself, where we are in relation to other major cities across the United States?
There's a softball, huh?
Yeah.
Let's see. I don't leave home without it. Now, I, I've got it memorized, actually. We, our position has not changed. Our ranking of the top 150 markets in the country, that they measure the, the lodging tax percentage that you pay upon checkout, we still rank number 141 out of 150 at, at 2%.
So I would say that's still an issue if, if we wanted to.
Well, it, it is, you know, and, and Councilman Williams and I serve, serve on that LART committee as does, as Dave Donaldson. And we were talking about it because the last couple of weeks, we have been going through the off-cycle applications. And there, there are so many needs in this city for, for worthy projects that really we, we addressed, we were able to address a number of them. And primarily, we have to thank this council and, and the mayor's office for taking a million dollars of ARPA in putting in, into LART. That helped us immensely in evaluating projects that we otherwise would not have been able to do. But I did say to Councilman Williams that, you know, we saw the figure earlier, we came in around $8 million in 2021 on what was very good average rate and, and fair occupancy. But if that number was double, it would, it would help, it would just help a lot of people, a lot of organizations in this city as well as primarily visit Colorado Springs in terms of promotion. I mean, that's where we, you know, we, we really do fall behind. And, and I, I really do have to go on the record and, and thank El Paso County because El Paso County did dedicate a million-dollar ARPA grant to us this year for 2022 for advertising.
To, to visit Colorado.
To visit COS. And we are going into six different markets that, four of which Southwest serves, two of which are high-demand markets in Washington, D.C. and Austin, Texas, where we see a lot of traffic come this way. And we are now out promoting in ways that we have not been able to do without that ARPA grant.
Thank you.
Okay, Nancy?
I just wanted to go back to the gasoline prices conversation and just remind folks that to stay downtown, you have the option of an electric bike and pike ride and scooters and a lot of interesting things to do in the downtown area without getting in your car and driving very far or, or taking that pike ride down to Garden of the Gods and riding around that way. So there are lots of ways to enjoy Colorado Springs without spending a lot of money on gas.
Thanks, Ms. Henjim. Ms. Avila?
Thank you, President Strand. So let's say that we did raise the tax from two to four. Where do you think that would put us? Right now, we're 141.
Take us to number 128.
You think you had that figured out?
Yeah, 128. Not too bad.
Yeah. Thank you for the question. Okay, please continue.
Here's the information on our website. It was overall positive in, in 2021. And you'll see one of the reasons why. Here's the top referring sites to our, to our Visit COS website, time spent on the site, social media activity, two Facebook likes, we're, we're our top two, top two areas that our social media activity is. Down just a little bit in '21 compared to '20. Down just a little bit in '21 compared to '20, but still pretty flat across '19, '20 and '21. Here's how much we spent on social media in our 2021 budget.
That's a lot.
And our going on to partnership, our membership dues, if you will. 2019 was the last year that we had taken our dues up. 2020 and 2021, we pretty much held our dues flat without doing, and didn't even collect many dues in 2021, 100,000. But we're back on track now for 2022 of collecting dues. All our spent on advertising was 1.6 million in 2021, almost on par with 2019. We did our vacation guides. I think Emily, you handed those out to people. Hopefully you have your visitor guides.
That's this.
There you go. We've got.
And I think we got some extra copies.
We, in 2021, we only printed 300,000. And we went through almost all of them. This year for 2022, what you have in front of you, we have printed 400,000. We are expecting the demand to really, really come back. Okay, top referring sites to our guide, where people come in to take a look at it. People still spend a lot of time on our site looking at the online version of that visitor's guide, going into our itineraries and looking at all the things that they can, that they can see and do. A little bit about the page views of our visitor guide on the site and pages per session. So I got through. I want to, I guess, before, if there's any other questions, there's one thing maybe that Councilman Helms, I can go back to your point and your question about LART. As a city, I think we learned a lot last year in the election cycle in thinking perhaps that residents' sentiment was different in 2021, going into the elections on parks and trails. And that was, in some cases, it was disappointing, but we learned. And I think there have been some polling done that has said people, people just really want to know where this money is going to go and how it's going to be spent and everything else. And I will tell you that we're about to kick off a campaign that's called Share COS. And it really is a three-phase education process to residents about, you know, unless you were blessed to be born here, somebody told you about Colorado Springs at some point in time or you were stationed here, okay? But we really want to remind our residents here of what a special place this is and that Share COS is an acronym to, well, not acronym, but it will talk about how we share COS from a social media standpoint, but it's also if, big if, but if LART does go on the ballot in 2023, that we really talk about how visitors can share the resources of keeping this place up and trails and spaces and all the things, the arts, all the things that we'd like to support. We think that we need to educate residents on why they could vote and get out and vote on something like that in 2023. But for right now, we're going to talk, we're going to stress community pride, understanding and awareness and really education about all the shared experiences there are in Colorado Springs. And be happy to answer any questions or show you some of the creative on that. But we are, we're working on that for this year.
Mr. Price, I've got two final questions, I think, unless council members have got a follow-on. What percentage of your staff is focused on marketing and, you know, the media stuff? That's got to be the lion's share of your budget and your staff.
Yeah, there's seven, seven of our 19 work in the communications.
Marketing area and media area. Okay. And what was the woman that does the national show? You showed it over at the Olympic, I think.
Samantha Brown.
Yeah, did you want to mention that?
Sure. Back on February.
I think a lot of people may know Samantha Brown.
Yeah, places, places to love. Back February 19th, Samantha Brown, Places to Love, had a 30-minute feature on Colorado Springs and the Pike Peak region. And we had her come in July of '21 and spend four days with us. And we took her, she ended up really at nine different attractions throughout the area from the Olympic and Paralympic Museum to the Cog and the new Summit House had just opened and up to, over to Manitou and up to Divide to the Wolf Resource Center. So we had her, we had her do nine different places. And when we, when that show came on the air, we did a, we did a special viewing over at the Olympic, Paralympic Museum. And we asked Samantha, it aired on 500 PBS stations coast to coast and will continue to air. And she said, there'll be about 3 million views of that program.
Yeah.
So it's.
Big deal.
Yeah, it places to love. If you haven't seen it, it's on our website as well as Samantha Brown's.
Great. Okay, thanks for the update on Visit Colorado Springs. Any further questions for Mr. Price? You're off the hook.
Thank you very, very much. Nice to see you.
Your 15-minute presentation only took 45 minutes. Okay, that takes us to items of introduction. And Deena, do you want to read that into the record for the next one?